I'll call the meeting to order and we'll all stand up and do the Public Legion, please. Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make the motion to adopt.
Anyone want a second? Any, anyone against the motion to adopt the agenda? Everyone in favor? One's in favor, okay. I'll ask for a nomination of, uh, the Chair of the Select Board. Who wants to have the tie? Who wants that? Okay, anybody opposed to the motion for Jeff King to be the Chair? Hearing none, Jeff, you're the Chair. I'll hand it over to you if you want.
Do I hear a nomination for Vice Chair of the Select Board?
Nominate Joe for you.
Are you a second?
I'm second.
Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Appointments to the Planning Commission? Apparently we have, um, Jamie Lee, Mark Teeter, Doug Langdon, Mary Sue Reed. Neil Reelin has declined to be reappointed. So if you want to, if someone wants to make a motion to appoint another for her. Do I hear a motion for the appointment? Of the Planning Commission?
I'll make a motion for the Planning Commission.
A second? Any comments or questions by the, anybody by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
I just have one point of order here.
Sure.
Just to clarify, the, how we appoint is the collective or the appointed town officers. I checked into the Pulten Charter and it says it's supposed to come to the Town Manager.
Okay.
To a letter.
Mm-hmm.
Right, that that's sort of the formal process.
Okay.
If they want to be a member of the Planning Commission.
Right, right. It doesn't say, is anything about advertising there?
No, that's correct.
Right, it does not, but, but I have noticed other towns are doing that.
We have, um, we have advertised in the past and, um, sometimes we get interested and more often than not, we don't get interested. Um, but yeah, usually that, usually any appointment, I, I direct the interested person to give me a letter which then I circulate to the board.
Yeah, that's the way we, it's been done. Then get a letter from Mary Sue Reed over that about the same, same thing and, um, and that's, that's pretty much how we got it in the past.
Yeah, that's what the charter is.
If somebody's interested and there's open positions, bring a letter of interest to, to the Town Manager.
Okay.
May I make a comment? Nobody knows what positions are open though because there's nothing on the website.
Um, when they come open, we usually put them out. Uh, Mary, yes, I know, we know that and we will put, we will bring it up in, in, in a meeting as we go. Usually what happens is around this time where somebody.
We are working on the website very diligently to get everything up and going. Sarah's a big help out of people so hopefully soon those questions won't be, no, because we'll be having it up in in good shape.
Can we continue?
Yep, okay. Um, I guess we can go down the list here. Uh, Dog Warden is using myself and Mark Stackpole. Motion for Dog Warden.
For Paul and Mark Stackpole.
I'll make the motion for Paul and Mark Stackpole.
Second.
Any comments or questions by the board? Thank you.
Come on in.
All in favor?
Even, even now on your sidekick many times?
Yes, you are.
Working on the badge for him.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries for that. Who is, um, Fourth of July Director?
Nominate Sarah Polk for Fourth of July, uh, Director.
Do I hear a second? Sure. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Carry. Uh, Recreation Directors? I'll nominate. Sure before you.
It's okay.
Being appointed, I'm happy. Yeah. You need more than one.
Good to have two.
They have two usually? Jonas was. Was Jonas?
Jonas was, yeah. I don't know how you want to work it. Something we haven't talked about yet, how you want to do that. We haven't talked, and I haven't talked about with anybody else.
Yeah. So we'll just have you as a director and you can be the sidekick.
Well, you can let you get a fun run in July four, so that's a, that's a pretty big part of the, the rec right now.
Do I hear a second for that? For Cheryl? For Cheryl? Any comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried? Brooklyn County Solid Waste District, which is typically the Town Manager. Do I hear a motion for Paul DeVita?
We'll make a motion for Paul.
The Solid County Waste Dis- District up? Any comments or questions? All in favor? Any comments? Brooklyn Regional Planning Commission?
That's Sarah.
And I'm Sarah. And me as the alternate.
You as the sidekick, yeah.
Second. Second? Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Brooklyn Regional Transportation Council, same. Same. Sarah, do I hear? Sarah and Paul as the alternate.
I'm Sarah and Paul for it.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carried? Tax Collector, which is Town Manager.
Can we lump you all in one? Nominate Paul for tax collecting?
Sure, Town Service, um, Officer, Learning Registrar, Town Health Officer. You want to lump them all?
Lump them all.
Okay.
Just one badge.
Nominate Paul for all of it.
I'll, I'll be above, yes.
Do I hear a second?
Zone got two.
Yeah, I said the one. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carried, you're it. Stevens Handfield for the Tree Warden. Did you say yes, Mark?
Yes.
Yes. Do I hear a second? All in favor? Motion carried? Connor Street Communication Union District, which is Mark Teeter. Uh, we need Mark. I'll nominate Mark for that. Second. All in favor? Motion carried. And Assessor. Mary Jo Teeter. Yes. Um, I'll nominate Mary Jo.
Now she actually asked me about the fence, fence viewer position. She wouldn't mind being the fence.
The what?
Fence viewer. Fence, you know, fences.
Oh.
Which, which you haven't had once before.
I was gonna say, do we have that?
Fence, fence viewer.
Okay, but let's finish this one first. We haven't voted on it.
Oh, okay.
For Assessor.
Oh, yeah.
All in favor for Assessor for Mary Jo?
Yes.
Do I hear eyes? Any, any opposed? Motion carried. So the fence viewer is I.
Because she's out there looking at properties all the time.
I mean, I think fence, isn't fence viewer historically the person that would mediate disputes between neighbors?
She can do that.
Do you have a job description for this fence viewer? Is that in the book? Have we had it before?
I think, no, I think it's just a, it's a.
It's, I don't know, that you're way to pull.
It's an antiquated thing.
Yeah, let's, let's do this the way that we're doing it with everything out. Somebody's interested in it. A letter of interest, gives it to the Town Manager and it'll come before the board.
I'm, I'm not sure exactly what it.
Because you want to be the lumber inspector too. Okay. All right? Okay, um, I think that exhausted that list.
How about Constable?
Oh, we didn't, good, thank you for pointing that out. We did not. Ilpris responsible.
I'll nominate Dale for Constable. Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Motion carried?
Thank you.
Anything else?
The T O V, get into the T O V.
The R B's, uh, good until 2024. Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Mark, cover everything?
I'm covering.
Thank you.
So then we have the adoption of notice posting policy and publishing in the newspaper. As I stated at our last meeting, uh, we post the notices on the webs, the hearings on the website. Here in this office, the message board by Coach Burger, the Post Office and the Library. And we publish in the Lakes Region Free Press. Yeah. Does someone want to make a motion?
Make a motion for that?
Make a motion.
I'll unsecond it. Uh, any questions, comments or questions?
How many places do that poll?
Three.
Uh, we actually post it more than, it's four. It's the website, it's here, it's message board out there, it's the library, it's five actually. Library and the Post Office here.
Just in case someone asks.
All right, just second. Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Move on to Public Comments and Concerns is up on the agenda tonight. Oh, anybody got any comments or concerns?
Yes.
Um, good things. First of all, I was hanging out at the pub and I didn't bring anything up and like everyone was talking about how uh, plows are doing great and the sidewalks are doing great and I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
Very positivity.
Can you say it again?
Since live, right?
Okay, many things that you've done a great job this year. And yeah, it was, many people said that, you know, so yeah, I just wanted to let you know. Um, other thing is, so, I was gonna say that no matter what.
I mean, even if it wasn't true, or?
Yeah, no. I went to the first complaint if it wasn't true, yeah. No, so my son's starting to school at Katie's, you know, on York Street and I've been walking down church with the stroller um, and then making that right turn and then same way back and it's, uh, it's interestingly dangerous at like eight in the morning, um, between Church Street and York and people are just flying down church, um, and then getting to New York to do whatever, um. I know I talked about sidewalks up here, but there's a highway and so that's a problem. But what about sidewalks from the trail to York on Church and/or at least, um, like a walkway, uh, Elephant Stripes, where we get, um, that crosses over New York.
See that right there is in the village and we can't.
What would be my next step then is?
I mean, we, I can bring into the village, Margaret.
Oh, I love that.
And Alan, as you probably know, is also the, um, uh, Superintendent of the Village D P W. So it's falling on two leaders that, that play in that sandbox, if you will.
There was a lot of places in the village that really need to be looked.
Yeah, and that needs a safety crossing. It's, it's not just me. I see a bunch of people that like, you have to kind of dip into the mud if, you know, people are, and then eight in the morning, no one's paying attention. Like they have their coffee in their cup. Um, so yeah, just wanted to bring that up.
And we will, on Thurs, every third Thursday at six thirty here is a Village Trustees Meeting. And it's, it's like this, you can, you can go to it and, uh, Alan will be on it and I'm sure that we could possibly ask the Village to get that on the agenda or something to look at. What, you know, visiting sidewalks, um, in, in here. I don't know. It's, that's up to the Village.
Yeah. You said Wednesdays?
Thursdays, every third Thursday. Here at six thirty is the Village Trustees Meeting.
You so much.
You're very welcome. Anybody else? Hi. Carol.
I'm on the other side for a change. Uh, now that Sarah has been appointed the Fourth of July Director, Sarah, is it okay to give out your information? One of the, uh, visitors in Pulten has already been asking questions if there's going to be field events because they want to do a benefit for Boston Children's Hospital and do something down there. Is it okay to start giving out your information on that then?
Yep, um, we are preparing, hopefully this week I'll be able to make an announcement on the dates, um, on the new recreation website and we probably will use the jump date for Tuesday to let people know. So just, although we haven't gotten far with planning, um, we want to make sure everybody knows that the dates will be the first and the fourth.
Okay, and I think one of the main concerns, and we get the questions in our office, is there going to be field events because it's really only three months away and they need to rent equipment and stuff that they're going to be doing that, uh, vendors down there and so forth, so, okay.
Sure, thank you.
Okay. And then my other question is, y'all know I'm always around in the American Legion Memorial Day. Is there any update on the town sign?
Uh, um, not a, not a recent update, um, but I will make a note to, to contact the, um, the person that's supposed to be making it for us.
Thank you.
Now Carol, here, the Legion planned a coin drop?
Not that I've heard.
Okay. The, um, I have that, I have that on the agenda under Town Management Report. That was, that was, um, Dan Williams who called me shortly before this meeting and unfortunately wasn't able to come to the meeting. But when he told me where he wanted to do, do the coin drop, that, that too is a Village issue because he wants to do a coin drop on, um, Green Up Day by Poppies, which is, we all know the Village, so.
Everybody have that mixed up, Carol.
Okay. Other, any, any, Mary?
Hi, um, uh, well, I was wondering, um, last time, I guess we discovered there's errors in the Auditor's Report that went through Lantin Town Report. And I was wondering, um, have those errors been corrected and is there, um, a way that the public can access a copy of it?
Um, good question. The Auditor, last night spoke, was looking at it and she hasn't reported back to me so I can back with her again.
Next question, um, I think last time I brought up two and this was again, uh, dependent upon you folks going to a Village Trustees Meeting. Is there anything that you could tell the public about the tax stabilization agreement status?
So the Board, the Select Board did meet with the Village Board in a regular Village Meeting in Executive Session regarding, um, uh, regarding the, the the course of the tax stabilization agreement, um, negotiations. Uh, the Town Attorney almost has a draft finalized that would be a counter proposal to regenerative land holdings. Um, so I hope to circulate that maybe as early as this week to the Board to, to review and um, Mr. King actually asked if we were going to discuss it in Executive Session tonight, but I don't have a, I don't have the draft, um, in my hands yet. So we're working on it, um, and, uh, the Village Board is informed of what this Board has been doing with it as well.
It was a good meeting.
And Executive Session, Mary Sue.
Correct. I understand. I understand. That's why I asked if there was anything you could.
Anything we could share, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. And, um, I just thought of this as we're talking about, um, Mary Jo Teeter. Now she has been changed from a Lister to an Assessor based on the voting we just had.
Correct.
Um, what happens to the two vacant part-time Lister positions?
Um.
Are they still there?
No, no, they're not there, although I'm glad you brought it up because I, I did discuss with, um, Mary Jo Teeter. She had someone express an interest in maybe, um, participating in that office and, and I was, I told her I'd bring it to this Board, um. I, um, I think it's a good idea if she, if she does have someone that's interested in it, they could kind of come up in, in the, you know, in the line, if you will.
Right, thanks. She's, uh, actually expressing her thoughts about that at the, um, informational meeting.
So I haven't talked to Mary Jo. I know she was away last week. I haven't talked to her, but she did say someone expressed an interest in, um, whether or not we we'd have to find the money in the budget, but I think it's a good idea. I personally think it's a good idea. Um, only because, like you said, she's expressed at the informational meeting that she'd like to get someone trained to maybe come into that position. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a Lister per se. Maybe it would be, I'm just thinking out loud, maybe it'd be like an assistant to the Assessor or something like that.
Um, also Green Up Day is coming up. I was wondering if there's any plans in the works.
Um, so traditionally, the, the, the Green Up Day, uh, Coordinator, which is traditionally myself and or Sarah. Um, traditionally, we would just keep a, a running toll here of someone so comes in, gets bad, says, I'm gonna do, you know, Franklin Road. And then, you know, the next person comes in and says, hey, I want to do Franklin Road. We would say, uh, someone's already picked that up. Would you like to do another road? Um, that's traditionally how it was structured since I've been here. As far as I know, it's been sort of the same all along. Maybe it was used to be, I think it must, might have been more structured before, like the, the rotary would be uh, more active. Um, I don't know if that was your question or?
No, I wasn't sure what. It's been that way since I've been here with you.
Yeah.
Um, we did receive some materials from the State for Green Up Day that I have no chance to look through, but, um, we're planning to, uh, make it a little bit more public this year. I'm planning to make it a little bit more public and, and announce it, um, so folks know when it's happening and how to participate.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We're in Public Comments and Concerns, Carol. Anybody on, uh, Zoom got any questions? Okay. Thank you. We'll go on to the road report.
Um, last, last time we did this, Dick was still at the garage playing, uh, Town, Town Mechanic, Highway Mechanic. Tonight, he's, uh, happily in the audience. Um, after a long night and early morning, um, following last Monday's meeting there, um, Dick and Dan Reed kind of were able to put their heads together and get that truck, which is Truck One, the 2006 International, up and running after going through pretty much, you know, probably a thousand wires on that truck and three different fusible lengths that had all blown and whatnot. So we were able, thanks to Dick and Dan, uh, to use that truck during that, that Tuesday storm, which was Tuesday, three fourteen, I believe.
I don't think people understand how valuable you really are.
Yeah.
In the road crew.
I probably should have taken some pictures.
Double shooting ability.
Also, they have to do it.
Thank you, though.
We did give you kudos last meeting and they weren't there, so.
Oh, I went right back and told them to, yeah, made sure he knew. Um, yeah, I, if, if he gets that involved in a truck again, I will be sure to send some pictures because let me tell you what, you, you walk in and look at that thing when he's got it tore apart and it's like, I wouldn't even know where to begin with that. Um, so anyways, that, that went well. The storm went well. We actually made it through a storm without anything breaking amazingly. Uh, first one for the winter, but I'm happy to say it now because it's behind us, so. Not the winter, but the storm. Um, we, we just kind of spot sanded, uh, from that storm and stuff, um, in case anybody is wondering, we're very selective where we actually dropped plows because the roads were so soft. Uh, the, the, it's very easy to take the road and put the road in the ditch or make quite the speed bump that you never wanted to see there and not really be able to fix it either, so.
We have a few of those.
Um, we also cut some brush from that, from that storm as well. We did have some stuff down in random places, but nothing that really slowed any traffic down. Um, three twenty, we, we checked our routes. We all went out in a vehicle and checked our, all of our individual plow routes. And we pulled the standards from Truck One and Two, so we just started doing a little road repair on Lewis Road, the north end of Lewis Road. We started at the north end of Lewis Road and worked our way south to include Walker Road, Ward Road. Um, we've not got to Hanon yet because we kind of left off at the Hanon Lewis Road intersection. And the intention is to get the rest of Lewis Road, Hanon Road, and then jump over to Griffin and go on town. So that whole interconnected area will be done. And we, we were trying to make our way around town and get to all the roads. We, uh, we did start with Lewis Road because it does have the most traffic on it. Um, so we're kind of prioritizing our, our calls. And we're, we're also staying pretty diligent about checking all of the routes. So that if one goes from not being so bad to this is atrocious and not passable by a fuel truck or emergency vehicle, then, you know, we'll, we'll jump to it and that as we need to. Um, three twenty-four, which would be last Friday, we put our, our standards back in Truck One and Truck Two because we really weren't sure what we were going to get for the weekend, but uh, after the winter we had, we were not going to be caught unprepared. And then we pulled them again this morning out of Truck One, Truck Two and Truck Three, so the only truck that's set up for a storm right now would be that new used International and Dick's truck. Um, but it's really, we've gotten rather proficient at pulling and putting them back in. So, uh, we pulled them for the, the sake of being able to put some more material on the roads and we started out with Fennel, uh, Fennel Hollow today because it was pretty nasty after, um, after the weekend.
Maple Fest.
Yeah, we, that was another thing. I, I don't know why I didn't have that in here. But last Friday, we concentrated on, um, River Street, River Street and Fennel Hollow because they're probably two of the most traveled for Maple Fest between Greenshaw House and then, uh, uh, TJ's. Got to go, I mean, Marshall Maples there. Uh, we just wanted to make sure that nobody had an issue or, or anything of that nature up there, so. Um, and until we can really get out and do some grading and adding material to the roads without causing more destruction been good, uh, we've just been cleaning up our yard, getting prepared for God knows what happens with the replacement of the, the garage and you know, we're going to have to clear everything out no matter what we do, so.
Give it all, like, all the metal and stuff down.
Yeah, we're getting rid of anything that we, anything that we can and, you know, cleaning out our, our area and making us a little bit more proficient with our storage and everything, so.
That's good. And now Get Your Hall is pretty bad.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll.
Got some, and top holes and stuff like that, yeah.
That would, that would, that was probably going to be the next area. Oh, we really had to jump over to Fennel today because uh, as they were trying to repair it Friday or make sure that it was good and be good for the weekend, um, Dick kind of sunk in with his truck. Nothing, nothing that was, it wasn't avoidable. You know, any truck would have done it going out there. It just, you have a very small window while the roads are still frozen hard for the first two hours in the morning and twenty minutes of that sunlight hits them and what was just a solid road has just turned into a mud hole now, so. Um, yeah, so we have a very, very short window if it does get cold enough overnight to do it. So that's why we jumped to Fennel and, uh.
It's usually worse than the other side.
Yeah. But I would say that the, the whole loop, Fennel, Fennel, Highland Gray and Hampshire Hollow would probably be the next on our radar after, uh, after we try to get Lewis completed, just, just for the sake of not having to jump around. Then we went over here and then we went back, you know, it's can start with an area, make our way through it. It's completed, now it's the next portion. Well, like I said, if, if something does, is emergent in between, we'll definitely, we'll definitely go over and take care of that.
I wish to have had a picture because there was an open house on Hampshire Hollow this, um, weekend and a brand new white Mercedes came on our road and I stopped to watch it and I called my neighbor and said, guess what's coming by? It was, went really slow and I'm like, oh my God. Trying to go and trying to move. Trying to go and trying to move like a pothead and get out. We had to go almost to my house. So you're talking almost two miles in. And I'm like, oh, that's not a good celebration. It was crazy. They were buying really fast. Where's your license?
This is what you get, you know? This is what you can look forward to if you're not from the area.
Hopefully, we only have one mud season this year.
And three.
We kind of have about three. Last really big thing that I've got in the report is I discussed before, um, looking to replace truck one because it would be the next tandem that we want to replace. I did reach out to ATG who we bought our big trucks from. He got back to me tonight and he's saying that as is that truck is a trade in value with ATG between approximately thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars. So I'm not sure what we really want to do with that. I know we're not really at the point of making a decision today, this month, next month, whatever, but.
Grading is thirty to thirty-five thousand?
Yeah, that's with ATG. That's what they would appraise that truck at. We want to call it.
For the new trucks, like, on fifty?
Oh, they're over two hundred.
Yeah, it's over two.
They're about two hundred and twenty, two hundred and forty. Depends on what you have on them. Heeded seeds. They're condition seats.
Yes, I hear.
Their ones are pretty tough, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're okay.
Yeah. So I did just want to throw that out there so you'll have an idea on that. And I'm totally open for ideas if somebody thinks that they have a thought on what we could do with it. I was kind of thinking about looking into like auctionsinternational.com and see if you can set a reserve if we were to go that route. When we get closer to, you know, replacing that truck, obviously, we don't want to get rid of it till we have something to replace it, but just, I want to take into consideration what we can do other than just destroying the thing, cutting it. I mean, the grant's great, don't get me wrong, but.
What do we have in our budget? For that right now? We have ninety in there? The truck replacement?
Um, we put ninety in, uh, I think it's ninety, yeah.
And then?
But we also have that backhoe that we're purchasing.
Okay, so that's.
So that's going to, that's going to put a good hit in that.
But then we'll have another ninety on July first because of budget pass.
I mean, I caution thinking that way, um, only because we purchased that that used 2014 International um, from ATG and that was a forty-five thousand dollar hit into that equipment replacement fund. So.
We've got some big expenses between maintenance and.
Here too.
Truck, yeah. I do want everybody to keep it in the back of their mind too, with truck one. It's asking a lot to put a guy in that truck for a long time because the fumes are pretty bad in that truck.
Okay.
And we have tried to seal that thing off the best we can, but you basically have to ride with the window down.
It turns into a chimney. It sucks.
It's. Yeah, I mean, you're getting it. It's not, you know. I'm talking extended exposure.
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to really look at this and come up with a plan.
Yeah.
Find some way to replace that truck ASAP.
Or do you realize, you know, we've asked for a lot as far as a truck replacement this year and everything and grateful that we've got what we've got. Um, but I do want to sink in seriousness of considering getting rid of it as soon as possible.
We'll start it in motion. Start the wheels turning. See what we can do. We can't promise anything, but.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
We'll start the motion.
What truck is that?
Truck number one.
Yep, 2006 International.
Yeah, the building would be a whole different animal.
Uh, the Hampton truck is the parts are in. He's working on getting the thing back together and it will be going back home to Hampton as soon as I get that phone call, so. And we will send them our precious thanks and I already told them at the board meeting last week, actually, because it came up, so they're they're still absolutely content with that and fine with the deal and everything, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. And the last thing is we're going to be looking for places to dump material this year. Uh, we had one main place to get rid of material and that's, that's pretty well filled up, so ditching material and everything. I don't know if there's a way we can advertise, get it out to the town people that you know, if anybody's looking for fill, but.
What about the what about the cemetery? The roads up in the cemetery, could they use some fill or?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking.
Yeah, so with this, this fill, let me just specify. You can have stumps, you can have brush. There can be roadside debris, uh, stone, ledge, whatever. It's it's whatever we dig from a ditch, right? It's not clean filled, right? And we don't screen it. Yeah.
The other problem is the ditch note is it has invasive species in it too.
Has?
Invasive species or invasive plants?
Oh. Right.
So that's another concern that that we have because, for example, on Hampshire Hollow, among other roads, the wild parsnip is just so bad. And that's the ones right at the edge of the road, the seeds fall into the ditches. So I just wanted to throw that out there too, in addition to the stumps and everything else in there.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Well, you need a place to dump that.
We'll be looking for a place to dump our ditching material, yeah, nearby nearby to where we're doing the work. I mean, we know that there's people out there that want some and we know where a couple of them are. But, you know, when we're when we're way up over on Blissville Road.
How many yards are you talking?
I don't, I don't know yet, but I mean, yeah, it really depends on what the project is and we're just kind of a looking ahead thing. We got to get the word out now so we can have a place when it gets to that time instead of, holy crap, we don't we're going to ditch this road, but we got no place to put the stuff. Now how do we find a person that wants it, so? Um, yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
And if they do, they have to see Paul for permits. Like that stuff.
Oh, yeah, for that stuff. Dump it. You need a permit. Over fourteen yards now?
Yeah, because I think we can give you like one lower, I think that is.
Yeah.
Twenty-eight yard, maybe. We upped it. We did up it.
We did up it from fourteen to twenty-two.
I don't remember.
Twenty-eight?
I don't remember.
We'll have to look at it to make sure.
Yeah, if it was twenty-eight, we'd be golden. That'd be two tandem lows, but if it was if it was twenty-two, then.
I think it was seven to fourteen, maybe.
I thought it was fourteen was the magic.
I don't want to say it because.
Let's make and find out what.
Yeah.
Make a decision. Anyway, we'll get back to you on what that number is. We did up it. A couple of years.
Well, I mean, I mean, the threshold that we're discussing, but you're discussing right now was without a permit, we've been issuing permits. But the thing that we try to be very cognizant about is, A, they know it's what Joe was telling them. So they don't come back and say, we don't want this stuff. Come back and get it.
Yeah.
Um, and B, we're, we try to be very diligent about not dumping anything near water.
Right.
Whether it be, you know, near a river, near, near a brook in something that appears to be wet.
Yep.
And you have property lines.
And property lines. So that's, that's what I'm trying to do.
That's why the permits are in place.
And also the person getting the permit, they don't, they mark a spot on their lawn. Please don't tell me to put the marker over your subdeck because we're not driving on that, you know? So there's a few things to consider in it, but nonetheless, you know, I don't know if we can get that on our homepage or if somebody's got an idea for kind of getting the word out on that, that'd be helpful.
Okay.
So. And unless anybody has any questions for me, that would conclude my report for tonight.
Thank the guys for all their help and hopefully we're done with Benjamin. Maybe it's spring draining.
We're all.
Be nice.
We're ready to make some roads look nice.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You don't have to, you can, you guys can bug out if you want. What's up, you? Right?
I'm not impatient, Mike, so.
Okay, there you go. Onward. Town managers' report.
Okay, I just, I have a note about the South Street Bridge. I talked to the state, I guess it must have been last week, and that project is moving forward. Um, it looks like we're, the, we're going to have to, um, preserve most of the bridge that's there, uh, because it's a historic bridge and they determined that it was, um, preservable. So the way it was described to me, basically everything from your feet up to your waist would be new and the rest of the bridge would be the historic bridge. Um, they do plan on putting new abutments in there. Um, given, given the fact that, you know, they're going to be putting a seventy-five year lifespan bridge there that it was described to me that the abutments, later or not, are not that bad, but because of how old they are, um, they're going to just put new abutments in. Um, they hope to begin advertising for the project uh, December of 2024. And with the anticipated instruction, uh, to last from the spring of twenty-five through the fall of twenty-six. Uh, the plan, they plan on negotiating with, um, abutting landowners such that we would have a, hopefully we would have a temporary, uh, bridge there, a single lane bridge during the construction, um, phase. Um, they, in their research, they determine that the town of Polley and the state had entered into a historic some sort of historic preservation agreement for that bridge in two thousand and one, I think it was. Um, so that lends itself to a not replacing it and keeping the historic, uh, bridge there. Um, it may, depending, I don't want to say too much because it was just preliminary conversations, but it looks like the funding of the bridge uh, may be in our favor, um, such that we may, we may not have to contribute as much as we typically do for bridge replacements, which is usually a five to ten percent. Um, uh, you know, the total cost of the bridge. But it looks like it might come out in our favor as far as funding. Um, but, uh, I just wanted to let folks know. Uh, and I don't want to get ahead of myself because I don't know how far along that they, if at all, they've negotiated with the butters regarding the temporary bridge, so I'll leave it at that. Um.
Be a single lane?
It would be a single lane temporary bridge.
With stoplights on each side, like you see around the state when they do temporary bridges.
And they, they did, they did say that during the inspections, as we know, we did the temporary repair on that bridge. Was it a year ago, two years ago?
A year ago. Two years. When it went down.
Actually, they fixed something last year.
So their hope is if, if between when construction starts, if that bridge if they do an inspection, they say, geez, those temporary repairs are just not cutting anymore. Um, their hope is that they could get, uh, to negotiate with the butters again and work out a deal such that they could get the replacement bridge in there even before, um, construction starts, just in case. You know, it was closed for what, twenty-eight days last time and it was it was pretty different. So that's all I can say on that. Um, the East Polley Bridge, uh, I spoke with those folks today to get a date certain and they're anticipating and mobilizing, uh, April third and starting construction, uh, around April tenth. Um, so that project is going to start moving forward again. Just looking at my calendar. Yeah. Um, and as I said before, Dan Williams was going to mention the bottle drives at the transfer station, but we can bring that up at another meeting because he couldn't come to this one. Uh, this one drop he's going to talk to the village about. Um, I did have a note. Uh, Rick at the last meeting had made a motion to provide this board with revenue expense reports at the end of each quarter uh, for the general government and the highway. Um, that was added to the agenda last time. But, um, it was.
We have to have a motion and vote on that again.
Yeah, so if you want to make that motion again.
Right, we make the motion.
Okay.
Wait here a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Um, something else. We do have some liquor licenses, uh, last time we did, uh, like St. Catherine Country Club. Their first, uh, license, third license, their outside license and the American Legion, same thing. Um, and then we also have the Dan Beer and Hospitality, which is Polley Pub, their first, third in outside consumption.
Is there a liquor license in there for a community dinner that's coming up through the rotary? That's up here where the old church used to be up on the Kerber Lane?
Liquor license?
Or a permit, I guess, for.
No, that's not, no, that's not.
That's being host, um, someone else's or a cash bar. Don't they get that paperwork?
Yeah, usually, um, if it's a, if it's a one-off event, the caterer uh, has to apply with the clerk, um, in the state for that event. I don't know, I don't know what you're referring to, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to.
Is there a date on that?
Cash bar. Which is May thirteenth?
Yeah, that's not, that's not in front of this board tonight, so.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know because it's got to be acted upon fairly quickly.
So they have to do that, you know?
The rotary has to, or whoever's putting it on.
If they have a caterer, usually the caterer does it.
I'm not sure who's putting it on.
The rotary is hosting you, but they're having you catered.
Right, the caterer has to do that.
So what's this report called? You should know.
It's a liquor.
Liquor permit?
Liquor, liquor license for that day. Same thing like Whaleback does when you have weddings and stuff. They have an event and it comes before the board and we sign the permit for it.
Any event? We have three in front of us. If someone wants to make a motion to prove those licensees.
In a second? Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Um, I think I would, uh, give Sarah the floor. She's got a couple of things she wants to discuss with the board.
Um, so I have been working on the East Polley Village Center renewal, um, for the past few weeks. And I'm here to present the draft, uh, application that goes to the agency. Actually, it's a Division for Community Planning and Finalization at the state. Um, I'm not sure if the board's familiar with this designation, but the, uh, East Polley has, um, an overlay designated village, which is a um, designation that it's had since June of two thousand and five and it's intended to, uh, promote uh, development of, well, not, not development, but, um, planned development and economic development of the village centers. So essentially, it is a safeguard for, um, for the village to, um, be planned adequately. So this is the draft, um, to the state. It includes a cover letter that essentially, um, describes the East Polley Village. Uh, the context, so there's a lot about the Polley Historical Society, the Horace Greeley Foundation, uh, the bridge, the East Polley Store, Rico Ring and, uh, Slave Valley Trails, which is um, the East Polley Village is acting as a gateway to some of those trailheads. Um, goes on to describe a bit more about, uh, the history. The business environment, which currently is, um, hasn't changed much since the last renewal, was eight years ago. the business environment, which currently is, hasn't changed much since the last renewal, was eight years ago. The business environment in East Polley Village includes an antique shop, the general store, home-based businesses, and short-term rental properties. In addition, the cover letter talks about some of the events that are held in East Polley. And there's an overview of the process of rebuilding of the gorge bridge. One of the requirements is to address the wastewater system, whether it exists or does not exist in a designated village. And so the letter also includes just a brief statement that there is no municipal wastewater system in East Polley. The second criteria for the application is why I'm here tonight. It's authorization from the town or village select board or trustees. So there's two ways that we can obtain the authorization from the select board, either through minutes showing that the renewal for village center designation has been authorized by the town or village or a municipal resolution authorizing the application. This is basically administrative at this point, because the designation has been in place for so long. And it's, it's something that we do want to continue to have for that, for that village. And I'm hoping to have it in the minutes tonight if we could, that the select board authorizes this renewal application. Other elements of the application are confirmed planning process, which the Regional Planning Commission writes a letter to say basically that the town's plan is in effect and meets all of its criteria. And then there's a little bit here about municipal plan integration and maps. Jamie Lee provided me some of this information, which are basically excerpts from the town plan about village center designation and a goal from the town plan that the planning commission does want to continue to have that for East Polley Village. There's also a map, which is the future land use map from the town plan that identifies the boundaries of the East Polley Village Center. And then there is a map from the last time it was approved in twenty fifteen, which is not correct at this point, because there is one antique store and a bed and breakfast that are no longer in that use in the East Polley Village. So I am brought some, some handouts. I don't know if anyone wants these, but this is related to the state designation programs and it describes the benefits of the village center, if maybe those will leave behind. It just essentially gives a designated village priority status in a lot of state-level grants. There are also tax credits, so this is similar to the PDRC's downtown designation, but PDRC is the entity that oversees that designation. The town is the entity that oversees the village center designation.
Your answer is a good question.
Yes.
But you might just answered it wrong, what you meant about the town overseeing it. Because I always think of a village, the village of Polley has a separate charter. The town of Polley has a separate charter. They keep saying village of East Polley, there is no separate charter for the village of East Polley.
Right, it's contained within the municipality, the village of East Polley is, but it is called a village. This gets really confusing in the way that they're using villages, so the village of East Polley that is part of the municipality, part of the town of Polley, is the village center that's designated here. So it might help to look at the map because it shows the parcels that are included in the village center designation, which is actually different from the boundaries of the East Polley Village, I would imagine, in the town plan. So this is essentially an overlay on that, on that village. And it identifies, the planning commission has purview over the parcels that are within this.
Right, because I know I've read it in the planning commission.
And I did check with Jamie Lee about modifying the parcels that are within this designation. And there's not interest by the planning commission in changing the parcels at this time. But if there is, if they do decide to do that at a later date, it's easy enough to do it without having to go through any more process. So I can leave this, I could either send the letter out to the select board to review the full application if you choose to, or we can
Come and make a motion.
Put it in the minutes to, so the minute should state that the town has authorized the village center designation application. If you decide to do that tonight, the two things I would ask you to do is to make a motion to authorize that designation with the two changes to the map to to make it current with the current uses in the district. That's, that's very wordy. Let me see if I can reword that for you.
Sure.
Yeah, so we need a motion to authorize the East Polley Village Center designation, village designation application with two amendments to the map, designation map.
How do you feel about that, Cheryl?
It is no way you can email that to us. Remind that, that would be perfect. So renewal means, we have, when was the last time we renewed it? Two thousand and fifteen?
It was renewed.
Two thousand and fifteen.
Right, so it's every eight years.
It was every eight years.
It was first designated in June two thousand and five. And then it is on an eight-year renewal process. So you won't have to do it again for another eight years.
I should add, that's why we have the sidewalk. Because to put a sidewalk in to apply for the grant that we did, you have to have it to a village.
Yeah, down, all the way down to the green.
Exactly, that's how it comes.
And that's good to know. That's why I asked Cheryl how she felt about it. I usually go around the table and ask everybody their comments and questions before we make a judgment.
So tell me again, now, how did the sidewalk, they ruled that?
Because journalists, we failed the first time.
Failed what, the grant we applied for?
We applied for the transportation grant. And there was some local opposition. Then we applied to a different grant, don't ask me which one, but it had to be to a village. That's how we got that.
You have to have a designated village like PDRC.
We did that in zoning quite a while. Because it is a village.
It's a good point, though. That is right, it's one of the tools that is allowed from this designation. You get priority for bike ped grants for downtown, downtown transportation funds only here, but you get priority for grants that help you build out the village according to the town's plan.
They gotta have streetscape and stuff like that, like replacing trees through grants.
Just never heard of public village, the village of East Polley, I've never heard that.
You're confusing it with, it's just a designation route. Like, like, like the village of Polley is a designated downtown. The East Polley, the East Polley Center is a designated village.
Which is governed by the select board.
If you were born in eighteen twenty, you would, it really, that was.
Must have missed that year.
Another tool that I can see being used in coming years are garden tax credits. So there are substantial tax credits for property owners that want to improve facades, you know, bring their buildings into compliance with codes, and it supports economic development in that way. There's probably other, many other, but that's, this is kind of on the bottom of this handout that I gave you. The second column says priority consideration, and so those are some of the, some of the grants and funds that are open to Polley as a municipality to apply for, for that village with this designation.
And if we don't approve this, we can, we will lose that status. Which is a lot of potential funding, especially the tax credits. That's a biggie. That's a biggie. This is actually a very good thing. And I know a lot of, you know, people don't understand it, but we have to understand it before they approve it.
We, so we would lose the renewal if we do not submit it to them by the first week of May. We, well, there is a grace period, two, six months after your renewal expires, so it expires in June. We don't, we don't want to do that. And you would lose the renewal at the end of that grace period, and then you have to reapply. And the application to designate it is far more intense than a renewal application.
Just because it's also, you have probably the chance to at least read over your.
Yes, sure.
Maybe we could wait for next meeting to.
Do you want to, so what I'm hearing from the board, you're okay with it? You want to read it and study it before, and the application before?
I would, if Sarah consented to me, that would be great, yeah.
Can we table this until the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Send us that so we can read it and so that the board can totally understand it. And then we'll bring it in, put it on the next agenda.
That's good, thank you.
Sounds wonderful.
Yeah, look it up.
Actually, it's a very good thing for, for East Polley. There's a lot of, a lot of benefits for the whole town. It's a lot of benefits for everybody, and that's, that's what we work for when we elect you for the people of Polley.
No, I just never heard of it, so I just want to do a little bit.
Yeah, I know, and that's fine.
So I just want to know a little bit more about it.
It's always a good thing to be a little reserved the first night you hear something and read it and understand it before you make a decision.
And I don't think that we've used it as much as we can, just as a heads up, so that's probably one of the reasons that you probably haven't.
And right now, with this coming through at this point in time, people understand it and start looking at things. You'll get people that will look at things in East Polley or in town and say, hey, let's do this, like the sidewalks. Okay.
Speaking of sidewalks, I don't know if you want, should I go through the RPC update, because I did attend two meetings for Polley. Okay, I attended the Regional Board of Administration meeting on the twenty-first. And the key takeaway there, there was a presentation about MERC, which is the Municipal Energy Resilience Program, Act one seventy-two. So I think the board knows that you've fully submitted three buildings for that program, the senior center, the town hall, and Stonebridge. And the, so there are three parts to this program. Community capacity grants are open now. They're four thousand dollars and they are intended to provide community engagement, should a municipality need that, or anything that promotes education around energy energy conservation within the community. So it could be consulting, it could be community energy fairs, community engagement and outreach for four thousand dollars. We do not currently have any plans to apply for that grant or implement it, but it is there, should anybody want more information. The second part of that is the MERC program are free energy assessments and audits. Applications will be opening in April or May. They include two possibilities. One is a walkthrough visual assessment of a property, which is about an hour and a half. Or the second option is an investment grade audit, which is four hours with a, probably a consultant or contractor. Those we will be applying for to support the original applications for those three buildings. And also to enable the town to apply for number three, which is the project inflammation grant, which is a max of five hundred thousand dollars. That's.
A match?
Max.
Oh, match.
Yeah, the program, as far as I know, hasn't been announced in that way to, so we would know what a potential match might be. But that is where you would obtain funding to implement the energy investments and retrofit buildings. So those projects need to be completed by twenty twenty-eight. And Polley, the Regional Planning Commission did an analysis analysis of its member towns in Rutland County, and Polley is ranks high for the energy burden. So that's good news and bad news. So I'm keeping an eye on that. And then the other update is, oh, sidewalks. I attended the Transportation Alternatives or Transportation Advisory Committee meeting, the first one that I'd ever been to. Yeah, it was interesting. There's a lot of road foremen and we're learning a lot about what's happening in other towns in Rutland County, so I'm in a position to keep an ear out for yeah, for those types of networking, or, you know, what other towns do they have that we might be able to use. So the fact that you need a place to put bill might be something that I could bring to that committee. And the crosswalks and sidewalks that we were talking about earlier is also something that I would keep an ear out for in that committee. So just as a heads up, I will be going to those meetings.
Thank you, Sarah.
Of course. Unless there's questions.
Has anything, where do we stand on possibly looking at the town garage?
I haven't had the chance entirely to revisit the site itself. I did speak with Stephanie Bork at the RPC about emergency management, that program. And she connected me with Kathy Reynolds, who is in Tinmouth, who was lovely, spent an hour on a Zoom call with me describing their process for getting a town garage in Tinmouth. She works for Efficiency Vermont and was a wealth of knowledge about how, you know, what they built, how it's functioning, some recommendations that she had in terms of.
That's good, that's fair.
Yeah, so she, they welcomed us to Tinmouth. Yeah, you know, she's, she was awesome. So I need to spend a little time next with the site. I've been spending a lot of time considering how the building might function and what the building, what needs you might have for the building, but I need to spend a little more time with the site itself. Particularly to identify funding for either reuse or finding a different site.
Well, we have to information from the architect. I thought we were waiting for him, too.
I'm still waiting for, I'm still waiting for the architect.
Because we can't do anything until we get, right?
He hasn't even looked at that building.
Yeah, so we can't do anything until he looks at to say it's even a possibility, right? Is that correct or no?
Well, I think I reported to this board that I did have an engineer look at. Essentially, where the stuff is now is, is safe, but if you want to move it anywhere else, you could potentially be looking at active fifty permitting and stuff like that.
Look at it.
Yeah, where, where the stuff is now is okay, but if you move anything closer.
What was that, Eric, I didn't hear?
The foot lane.
Oh, foot lane, yeah.
Does it, would it be big enough or does it have to be bigger?
I'm sorry?
I'm just wondering if the new building would be bigger than the existing building, then you're not going to have enough room because of the big trucks, that the whole idea is to put it out to maybe have a bay or something to work on, and you're talking bigger than it's not going to fit in spite you have, which means obviously you get rid of the woods.
Yeah, it would probably be all re, or de-flattened and just start.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but if it's much bigger, we're going to have space. That's what we were talking about.
We not even need the wood.
That's why I hoped not, but still.
heated to Efficiency Vermont like that, with a different whole, different heating system for us.
Dick's tired of playing mechanic and.
Yeah, that's, that's something we got to stand on top of and, and you know, all of our little projects that we got going on.
With that.
Well, that isn't little.
When did Tinmouth redo their garage?
They just completed it, I think she said, like, last fall, yeah, very recently.
Yeah, I'd like to take a road trip sometime when it's feasible for, just take a road trip down. Get an idea what we're up against, because if we don't get money for this, we'll have to put it out for a bond vote. And we have to have answers for questions that will come. So when, when we can, when it's feasible, let's get a few of us together and take a road trip to Tinmouth.
We've been trying, but it's been the weather has, every time we've got set up to go to Rupert, there's a storm and I've been able to go. Guys, very nice. I didn't know, whenever you want to come, just call me, but we haven't been able to connect to go check it out.
Okay, thank you. I got a couple of questions for you. Status of delinquent taxes? Can we, are we going to, or can we, our taxes, our delinquent taxes, we went through a process the last time. How bad are we in our delinquent taxes?
I don't have the number for you right now. It's it's better, it's better than it usually is, only because the state of Vermont with the pandemic has been helping people catch up on their delinquent taxes.
Oh, good.
So there's been quite a few delinquent taxpayers that maybe have historically been delinquent, that are getting assistance.
That's good news.
So I, I do need to check. I'll check with. So I, I do need to check, uh, I'll check with, um, someone that knows better about it than me, because there, because there was a lot of moratorium on trying to collect delinquent taxes, utilities.
Okay.
Uh, I want to make sure that we're, we're, we got the clear to go because we can move forward like we did before, the last time.
Yeah.
Um. That we did the, the full round of, of collections.
And then, uh, how many openings do we have for the Planning Commission and the DRB?
We have one vacancy on the Planning Commission and we have two vacancies on the DRB.
Not one.
Oh, sorry, yeah, right, one and one, one and one, yep.
And Jonathan is here today. He was the gentleman I was going to talk to at next meeting. If you want to meet him, you could.
Well, the thing is, is they gotta take and people are interested in being on it, they have to, like we've done in the past, give a letter to the, of interest, to the town manager and then it goes from there and come to us and, and we'll go from there. All right, I'm, I'm good, I'm good.
Someone want to make a motion for the board orders?
Make a motion, some more orders.
Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor?
Wait a second.
Wait a second.
One more, can?
All right. Health officers report, you got a vet back.
I don't, I don't have anything to report.
Oh, geez. Regional Planning Commission?
Sir, just did that?
Yes, just did that. We don't need executive session tonight, no. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Can I just say, maybe for next meeting, can we put on, um, discuss our priority list? We talked about last meeting, put on the agenda, just so we can, the new faces, we can update our priority list.
Sure.
And check off a few things.
Mm-hmm, good.
Cognitive event?
I gave you one last meeting, my friend. Yes, I did, I said, look, you know.
That's good, is there a motion to adjourn? Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Do you have a second? Okay, any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? We're out of here.